Okay, it is seven o'clock. We don't have an official clock, but.
Oh.
Oh, sorry. I didn't reset my watch here, but it is six o'clock and. Good evening and welcome to the November eighteenth. Twenty twenty four meeting of the Oconee Planet Commission. We are recommending body to the Oconee Board of Commissioners. Decisions made here tonight will be forwarded to the B O C for final actions. Tonight's agenda and the signup sheets were out back. I've got them delivered, but if you forgot, I'll stepped raised hands when we get to that point. Of we follow the these procedures, the Oconee Planning Department staff will present the application. And their report and recommendations on that request, then we'll invite the petitioner or the petitioner's representative up to. Tell us a little bit more about the project if they need to, then we'll invite public comment on the project in favor of the application. Those two, the petitioner's representative and the comments in favor will try to keep to about twenty minutes, and that's why I have the stopwatch that I didn't reset. Then we'll take input from anybody that might have some words against the application. Again, we want to keep it to about twenty minutes or less. The petitioner's representative, if there is time left, we'll be invited to address if anything that we think he can address today. After that, I will close the public comment section of the meeting, and I'll bring it up to these people sitting beside me in the planning commission. They will get a chance to discuss the request, ask questions of the petitioner and of the staff until they get some sort of clarity. And then, once we get to that point, I'll ask for a motion and a second and some discussion if necessary, and then we'll make a vote. That vote will be forwarded to the planning or the order commissioners, as I said. In order to keep to those twenty minute timeframes, we ask the following. For the benefit of those present and a few that sometimes join us online. Make all your comments up here at the podium. Upon approaching the podium, please give us your name and your home address. Please direct your comments to the commissioners and not the audience. When there are multiple speakers that have similar things to point out, you can just say ditto if you'd like. But rather than repeating those statements, add in the the few comments that you would like us to consider. And then we ask the audience to extend the courtesy by not applauding or commenting from their seats on any of the speakers. And with that, I will ask those of you that are here, sitting next to me, who had a chance to read the minutes from last meeting. Were there any typos, corrections, or additions that we need to? Put in there? Need discussion on that. So if there is not, I will ask for a vote to approve the minutes. Need a move. There you go. Chris is the first. I need a second, please. Who was that? Okay, and you'll raise your right hand to approve the minutes. I'd appreciate it. Okay, I'll call it unanimous. You didn't vote, I assume, because you weren't here. Okay. Call it unanimous. I think that works. And with that guy, I'll ask you to come present the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, your first case is rezoned P twenty four zero one one five Saint Mary's Highland Hills, Inc., applicant owner. This is a portion of C zero one J zero zero one along Plaza Parkway and the Loop and Jennings Mill Road. It's currently zoned R three. In the regional center character area. And again, the request is rezone the fourteen point three three acre property from R three to B two. You have a recorded plat in your application as well as the concept plan proposed. The architectural images submitted with the application. Site visit pictures. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, at least eighty percent of exterior wall surfaces of all buildings and structures shall either be brick veneer, stone veneer, or glass, or a combination thereof. Additional primary and accent materials are allowed, as indicated in U D C section three oh six oh three. Number five, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six foot masonry wall. With facade materials matching the exterior of principal structures with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Closure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Number six, an updated traffic impact analysis shall be submitted for review prior to approval of the preliminary site plan plat. To address comments from the transportation consultants. Number seven. All lots shall be accessed via Plaza Parkway. One foot no access easement shall be recorded on subject property on the frontage of Paul Brown Parkway Loop ten and Jennings Mill Road. And finally, number eight, the following uses shall be excluded. Dollar stores, variety stores, massage therapy establishments. Car, motorcycle, recreational vehicle, and motor dealers, pawn shops, cigar and tobacco stores, including vape shops, electric electronics, cigarette stores. Tattoo parlors, used merchandise stores, and recreational vehicle parks and subdivisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'll ask the petitioner or petitioner's representative to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering, ten fifty Barber Creek Drive, building four hundred, Watkinsville. We're representing the applicant this evening, White Oak Development Partners on the proposed request. As Guy said, the property is currently zoned R three for multifamily residential. Since there's no residential sewer available at this time, the applicant is seeking to rezone the property to B two for commercial development. As Guy said, uses are proposed as a high end indoor health fitness club and a business hotel on two lots. Ownership will be fee simple on both of those lots. The estimated size of the hotel will be about fifteen thousand square feet. And the estimated size of the health fitness club will be seventy two thousand square feet. The Health Fitness Club will include an outdoor lap pool area, an outdoor pickleball and tennis courts. Activities to be conducted inside of the Health Fitness Club shall include workout floors, fitness studios. Personal training services, cardio group classes such as yoga, cycling, Pilates. Other activities in the pool area could include typical aquatic activities such as group aerobic classes, swim lessons, and lap swimming. I do want to point out two things on the conditions. The number eight, the massage therapy establishment, we'd like that to be stricken from the uses that are not allowed. Health Club could have massage therapy as part of their programming or have a massage therapist on staff. I know that Saint Mary's Wellness up on Epps Bridge is part of their programming. They do have massage therapy. So we'd like that stricken. And then on the number four. The eighty percent exterior wood, exterior wall surfaces of all building structures should be either brick veneer, stone veneer, or glass. Just would wish that that gets changed to match the U D C requirement. That kind of limits us on stone. I mean, on wood materials and also hardy uses on some paneling and stuff. So we want to limit it to eighty percent just on stone veneer or glass. They kind of won't have as much options as we can. I don't know if the other, that condition is applied to everything over at Epps Bridge. If we were doing a new development, coming in there with just, you know, a massive development and that was a start of it, I'd be fine with it. But I'd like for us to be able to play by the same rules everyone else. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I did not get any other names on the signup sheet, but I'll ask if there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of this project or. Without any other favorable comments. All right. I don't see anybody rushing the podium, so I'll ask, is there anybody who wants to speak in opposition? Again, I didn't get anybody sign up. All right, we've given that opportunity. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Hopefully, everybody remember we started six these days, and I'll go ahead and bring it to the. And ask if you have any questions or. Things you need to address.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Greer. Did I get your name right? Okay, thank you. A couple of questions. The outdoor pool, you're going to do that in Oconee County in winter time?
Uh, yes.
You're gonna close it? The the. In the winter time, I mean, does it?
Ask him if he would like to do it on there.
Possibly be an open. And also, there will be an indoor.
I'm sorry, could we ask you to come to the podium, please, and follow procedure? Thank you.
My name's Kyle Ward. I'm one of the managing partners of White Oak Development. So there will be an indoor aquatic component in addition to the outdoor.
Okay, thank you. And then, do you know the brand of the hotel that you're going to put there?
We we haven't secured any any tenants for that space yet, so that's TBD.
What is, who is your target clientele?
Uh, on the Health Club, so it'll be a very family centric. And so just think of it as a. A country club without a golf course. So there will actually be, in addition to some things that Justin mentioned, there will actually be childcare there. So, you know, you could, your children would have childcare while you work out or play pickleball. But just just really a family centric club.
What about the hotel? Who's your target clientele, please?
Again, we don't have a a particular brand or user for the hotel, but it would be, you know, I would envision it probably being a business associate like hotel.
So you don't know who would, I mean, the interior or the who's going to stay or if it's going to become an extended stay or none of that? Very well. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have some questions?
I've got two questions.
We'll be go ahead for who?
I guess, Mr. Greer.
Representative, okay.
Not sure how in your real house you are, but first, with the traffic study by Kenley Horn.
Yes.
They say anything about a traffic light potentially down at Plaza and Jennings Mill?
They don't mention it. I know that I don't have that traffic study with me. I do remember in reading through that, that they said that level of service on that road was adequate. I know that they, the traffic consultant asked for basically where we got the traffic counts from, and then also there was one other item in there. That he wanted to address, but it was very minor, but no, they didn't mention that as part of the requirement.
All right. And then the second part would be with the sewer capacity. The zoning impact analysis says that there is not supported by the county sewer capacity. Speaks about residential, high density residential. Want to make sure, I don't know how much communication you've had with them about. There still being sewer capacity for this being zoned commercial with it saying that it's not available for the residential use that it's currently zoned.
Correct. So there the corner of the county sewer use policy, you can't get sewer for residential, but for commercial uses in this area, there is capacity available.
Okay, so it's not like there's a city issue at the treatment plant or anything.
No.
Okay.
And there's not a sewer line to this piece of property, but the sellers have access to sewer and will be getting an extension through their property. That's part of, that's contingent upon the sale.
Got a question. Justin, what? Since the word massage is very gray, I guess. What what word would you like?
Well, I would rather that say massage parlors are not.
I understand. So 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 what? So what? So what?
I think he's implying a standalone.
Sports like. Like, give me a hint.
It could be like chiropractic massage therapy. Or sports, yes. Both of those would be as part of this, could be as part of their programming.
A medical massage.
Yes.
That's correct. All right.
Not not a massage parlor, make that clear. And I think that's probably the intent.
Yeah, I'm going to invite Mr. Herring to come up to address that. Mr. Herring, real quick, let's address that real quick. So when you excluded massage parlor, you're talking about a standalone advertised on the street type spa. Uh, massage parlor.
That's correct.
Because just like Saint Mary's, you're not going to put the advertising on the outside of this. It would be one of the amenities.
That's right. And it's more of an accessory used to the to the spa center.
Right.
To the to the fitness center.
Because I think that's how the code is written, is so you don't have standalones that are exclusively used or massage parlor type activity.
That's right. Yes.
And then while I got you up here, let's clarify the sewer. The utilities department didn't make any comments. So do we assume that? At this point, it's positive and it'll be determined closer to build time or how does that work?
Sewer is available for commercial development.
Okay. All right, Chris, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Your question is for who?
Mr. Herring's up there. On the buffer. On the Athens perimeter. Looks like it's just a normal.
That's right. Landscape strip. Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Greer.
Still have a question.
Okay, let's use Guy while he's up here.
Yeah, yeah. Guy, if we if we use the normal culture, sports medicine, is is that get where we need to get away from where we don't want to be?
That would be fine. Yes, sir.
Got you now?
Yeah.
Right. Chris is asking.
Hours of operation for all of the outdoor stuff, the pool, the tennis courts, the pickleball. What? Maybe it's for the applicant, but what do you think that is? I'm looking at lighting here. When would the outdoor lighting be turned off?
Um.
You want to ask? Is this a twenty four seven thing or what is this?
It's not twenty four, yeah.
You know, would probably be at latest ten P M, eleven P M. It follows pretty much like the retail hours that would be adjacent to the.
Yeah, the county code requires us to have fully shielded lights anyway, so a lot of that's inward and down. You probably, you you can't have any spillover at the property line. We have to do a lighting plan to address that.
Yeah, I'm just kind of with the with the highway right there. Okay. So question for Guy Herring.
Get your exercise in.
Let me address that too. Great. I don't think you'll, the way the grade is right there, I don't know that you'll be able to see from the loop into this development.
Yeah, it is. There's a, it's probably.
Tremendous grade change.
Fifteen feet subgrade of.
Yeah.
Thank you. Guy, I think you had one more for you.
So then is there a normal operations, hour of operations for something?
Well, no, what the way we manage that is mainly foot candles at the property line. So the idea is, just like over at Epps Bridge, the idea would be to to manage that.
Before you sit down, you you often put in the trash truck services and things like that, but since this sudden brought up to a residential, you didn't.
That's right. Yes.
Okay.
Jim, Mr. Herring, I'm interested, I guess, in the hotel business. Since it seems to be rather indefinite, is. What is to keep that from becoming a vertical apartment building?
Well, it'll have to be managed as a hotel and flagged as such.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Any more questions for either party? One more question. Mr. Greer, Mr. Greer, if I may ask you, please. Thank you.
Is the applicant planning to do the fitness center and build the fitness center and the pool and that sort of thing, or is that also to be let out? Or a contract, I mean, for somebody else to manage? You are going to develop it, manage it, run it, at the at least. Okay, very well. Thank you. All right.
And for anybody online, he answered from the back of the room, but it was affirmative that local management. Okay. Is that?
Yes, I'm.
All right. You guys a little bit more time?
Yeah, please.
While you guys are thinking, I haven't heard anybody comment about number four's request. Any comments on number four condition?
I guess I got a question about number four since we're.
Four.
Guy.
Mr. Herring.
Oh, recent. Months, how is number four been addressed or other rezones?
Yeah, we across from, let's see, Piedmont on the connector. The development that's under construction now by research order, I think is what it's called. So across from the dentist, the row of dentist offices there, those have the same conditions as we're proposing in this one.
This eighty wood stay in line with everything in there.
That's right. Yeah, it's in line with what we required of that rezone as well. And it does allow for accent material that is allowed in the U D C. So if there were some metal or some wood, those would be allowed as accent material. But the majority of it would need to be the brick, stone, or glass.
Okay. Any other comments on that particular? All right, thank you. So with those two items addressed, I'll go start fishing for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, P twenty four zero one one five. With the. Exclusion part. We leave massage therapy establishment there, but except sports medicine. Will that work?
Add the exception.
As an exception, sports medicine.
Under excluded is massage therapy with the exception of.
Yes.
Medical.
I'd like to word, use the word sports, medical, if I could, because it's business.
Understood. All right. I need a second.
Second.
Nathan. And then any additional discussion on the motion to approve with modified condition eight? Leaving condition four and all the other recommended conditions. So. No further discussion, then I'll ask for a raise of a right hand if you approve of the motion to approve. That's your number. All right. With that, I will move to applicant twenty four zero one eight seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P twenty four zero one eight seven Brenda Dupree trustee. This is parcel B zero two zero four two. Currently zoned A G in the community village character area. And the request is a rezoned point six eight acre property from A G to O I P. You have a recorded plat, in your package, a recorded plat, a concept plan. Site visit pictures of the existing structure just to be used as the office. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. For this one, I have. Few names up here, but I'll ask the. The applicant or the applicant's representative, is that who I've got here? Okay. And I assume this is April Mashburn?
Yes, it's Mashburn. Yes.
Mashburn, sorry.
Hey there, April Mashburn. I live at twelve forty one Sims Road. I belong with my husband, own Armor Homes, same address. We work out of our home for now. We're a small construction company, growing, but small. We have four employees, all locals. I live about two miles as the crow flies from this piece of property. So we have a contract on it with a contingency to have it rezoned. Would love to build our office space there for the business. We hope to make it actually look like a house. We build homes, no commercial building for us, so we would love for it to actually look like a residential property. But one that we work out of with our employees. So Mr. Brian Kimsey has done all of the site design for us, so. He's here if you have any technical questions, but happy to answer questions myself when the time comes. Thank y'all.
Okay. So do you want to have a same Brian or? Yeah, might head off some questions. There you go.
Hey, Brian Kimsey, Carter Engineering, ten ten Commerce Drive, Bogart. Ms. Mashburn did a good job explaining what they do. This site is an existing residential home. There is not sewer available on site, so it'll be on site septic. There is water available that we would utilize. There's currently a well on site. But it'll be decommissioned because we can't fit the house where the well is currently. So it'll be decommissioned. They'll have to attach to county water sewer. It's a four thousand square foot footprint that they'll utilize. As as Ms. Mashburn said, it's going to look like a house. I think you have in your packet what the, you know, typical house would look like. On the backside, there will be a three bay garage. We're showing two bay, but maybe three bay garage. That will will house some of their their construction equipment park. There will be no outdoor storage on the site. And the site will meet all the county regulations for stormwater buffers, et cetera. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. All right. Again, this signup sheet didn't get any others that wanted to speak in favor, but I gave that opportunity. All right, I don't see anybody moving. I'll go ahead and ask, is there anybody that wants to address any opposing argument? Again, I don't see anybody moving, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it up to questions that my fellow commissioners might have. Who wants to go first? Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question.
I was going to say, how about Matt? Or the applicant or?
Yeah, yeah. I was looking for some representative architecture for your three bay. I don't see.
We don't have that. I mean, it's thought, they haven't got a full architectural plan yet for this, so we gave a typical. Image of what it would look like on the front side. So you won't see that.
Yeah. Right. How many square feet do you propose it to be?
Four thousand total square foot.
Including the garage?
Including the garage. Not that, not that includes the upper level. That's the footprint.
Right. So the garage is going to be separate or attached to the house?
It'll be attached. So on the concept plan, did you get, you have the concept plan?
Right. Yeah, I do. Yeah, I thought you said that there would be another three car garage that.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, it's it's attached. That 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 back L that you see is the garage.
I understand. That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Okay.
But. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I've got one more question about the garage. So the entry to the garage.
We've got a little loop drive shown because of the way that they may have to. Let me open it back up. So they can have access on the front and the back if they need to drive through.
Yeah.
That's the only reason.
Okay, that's what that.
So it, you know, if you've got a equipment truck that you want to pull in there, you won't necessarily have to pull them back out. You can drive through.
You, that pad in the back, you're not anticipating any outdoor storage, you're saying?
Outdoor storage. That's correct.
Anybody else before you sit down?
What do you see the outdoor materials?
On the on the siding, it'll look just very similar to what you see there. They want it to look like a house. I would say wood, wood siding with accents. Is that what you're thinking?
Already. Okay. You look like you're.
I do. I just generated one. Mr. Herring, may I ask you, please?
Thank y'all.
Yes, they've offered already plank for the siding. I guess it would be appropriate if we were to put that as a condition.
You can, but you don't have to. I mean, it's part of the application packet, so we would be able to enforce that.
You, it's already.
Yes.
It has, okay. And then also no outdoor storage. They've put that, but I don't see that in the conditions.
But it's not allowed in.
Not allowed either. Very well. Okay, thank you.
I've got one more for you guys. Not sure if this is you or environmental health.
Not sure if this is you or environmental health, but drain lines look really close to the property line.
Right, so they'll, they'll work through that with environmental health when it's time for the permit.
Yeah, I have one. Access is only via Ruth Jackson, not through the church parking lot?
Yes, sir, that's all that's proposed. That's, that's, we could hold them to that, yes, sir.
All right, we've now got it? Oh. After I tilt my head twice, then I get to ask, I move we approve P two four dash zero one eight seven with. With staff conditions to approve, Chris has given me a first, I need a second. There you go, Lisa. All right, I have a first and a second to approve with conditions. Please raise your right hand if you agree. Thank you. Unanimous? All right, as far as I know, we have no further business to address, so I will ask for an adjournment motion. All right. Two in one night. All right, Lisa's giving me a first, but a second. All right, there we go. Have to refer to my list, I'm sorry.